Good evening. I call to order the Town Council Budget Work Session. Hard to believe, this is number three. The date is Wednesday, March 6th, and the time is 6:40. Welcome to the Town Chambers, and if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of the Town Council members just arrived back from a wonderful event called Welcome to the Community for the Waves Team, and it was sponsored, I believe, by the Chamber of Commerce, who is here tonight, so a lovely event. Tonight, on the agenda, we have Accounts 1005, Human Services, to Account 1810, Contingency, including Employment Benefits, Debt Service, and Capital Improvement Plan, as well as Accounts 0810, which is the Police, to Accounts 0880, Emergency Medical Services. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Alfred. Thank you.
I've provided the Council with a worksheet for the human service agencies, which we'll be doing first this evening. And I'll also be working off the chart that's on the screen. The first agency that had submitted was South Shore Center. They'd requested $15,000, same as current year funding. Is there anybody here from South Shore? One of the things that we have traditionally put into the budget narrative, and you have it before you, is the value of the percentage of what South Kingstown's fundings are for each agency. In the case of South Shore Center, total municipal funding for the 1213 year had been $39,056, of which $15,000 came from South Kingstown. So, the municipal share was 38.4% of the total monies that they received, yet our client base, as a percentage of the clients that they saw, was 22%. So, we are providing contribution in excess of what the client ratio is for total clients seen by the agency. The second organization is the Home and Hospice Care of Rhode Island. They'd requested level funding at $1,500. In terms of percentage share, South Kingstown's the only community that provides funding for this agency, and has about four, almost 4.5% of the service base. BNS is the next agency on the Council's appropriation list. $24,000 requested, which is level funding for the current year. Is anybody from those organizations, from that organization? Next is Thundermist Health. Thundermist requested $24,000, which is the same level funding that they had received in the current year. With Thundermist, municipal funding generally is $27,000, so we're at about 89% of what's given through local communities to the agency, and we have under 30% of the client base that they service. Next agency is the Phoenix House. Phoenix House requested $12,000, which is level funding for the current year. We have 40% of their client base, yet we provide 96% of the funding for that agency from local sources. Next agency is the Johnny Cake Center of Peasdale. Their request is for $22,000, which is the same level of funding as they received in the current year. I believe we've got representative from, Sue, you want to come forward?
Welcome, Susan.
How's that?
Good.
I'm Susan Castadis, the Executive Director of the Johnny Cake Center in Peasdale. First, I want to just send our regrets from our new Board President, Catherine Herojak. She wanted very much to be here tonight. She's over at Salve, that's where she works, and she has a meeting tonight, so hopefully you'll get to meet her another time. So, on behalf of the entire Board of Directors, I want to thank you for your continued support of the work we do, and for coming out and helping us at Thanksgiving. We really do have a lot of fun having you there. As you probably know, the Johnny Cake Center is entering its 40th year of service to the community. Very exciting times that we've been able to do, that continue that work for so many years. Over the past couple of months, what the Board and the staff and I have been doing, we've been going through some old archives, historical documents, and newsletters, and some really old newspaper articles, and it's been really kind of interesting to see the journey of the Johnny Cake Center. What we've realized through that is that we could not have done the work we've done over those 40 years, and I don't say me, because I've only been there for eight, but could not have done that work without the generous support of the community. And so, we've decided that the way that we would commemorate that year is to be able to thank all the partners that have helped the Johnny Cake Center. So, we have a series of events that are going to be planned, and I hope that you'll be able to join us. I do have a newsletter that each of you have, and on the front of it is information about the history of the Johnny Cake Center, and then on the back, there's some information on a couple of the events that are coming up. You also have in front of you a copy of our latest statistics, just hot off the press this afternoon, and you'll notice that the numbers aren't changing very much from last year, so we still are continuing to see a very high demand for requests for food. In fact, now, very sadly to report, that New England states Rhode Island is number one for food insecurity. We have now surpassed Maine in that distinction. We have 24% of our state that is living on SNAP benefits, or food stamps, and last year when I was here, I know that I reported to you that 55,000 Rhode Islanders were using the food pantries. That number has escalated to 67,000. So, the Johnny Cake Center has a lot to work, work to do. The generosity of the community has been what's making that happen again. We had 59 tons of food that was donated by individuals and organizations throughout the towns of Narragansett and South Kingstown, either through individuals or food drives. I do want to point out to you two programs that have been highly successful. One of them is our Healthy Harvest Program, and what that is, is a farmer's-style market that we do in the summertime, runs from July through October, and we wanted to increase the amount of fruits and vegetables that we were providing to folks as a part of the Healthy Places by Design, and we're very proud to say that we were able to do that. We distributed 16 tons of produce in a 14-week period through that program, and the year before, we had done five tons, so that's a significant increase of helping to increase the nutritional value of food provided to people that need our food pantry. The other program that's been highly successful is Johnny's Locker. Johnny's Locker provides snacks and toiletries and school supplies to students at both South Kingstown and Narragansett High Schools. The items are kept at the school, and the students access them through the Student Assistance Counselors. The great thing that I love about this is that our teen Johnny Cake volunteers are the ones that collect those items, and they bring them over to the high school, so we have a peer-on-peer support for that program. Last year, that program was accessed 300 times, and just in the month of January that just passed, we had it accessed 120 times, and 59 times just last month. Finally, I want to just tell you about a new program that I'm very excited about. It's called the Hope Cafe, and again, you have a pamphlet there on that, and you'll notice you have a little wooden coin in front of you. The Hope Cafe is something that I was researching about three years ago with the Rhode Island Foundation. It's a donation-based restaurant where patrons pay what they can for their meal, and I know that makes business folks cringe when I say that, but they're very successful. It's a new way to address food insecurity for the missing meals that people are experiencing, and it provides an opportunity to build social interactions between people of various sectors of our community that might not have a chance to meet. Again, the model is very successful throughout the country. There are currently 30 cafes that are up and running. There are probably about 100 that are in the planning stages. I just recently came back from a summit in New Jersey where there were over 100 people in attendance that are either have cafes opened that are planning ones in the future, and I have personally visited five of them. The Johnny Cake Center's been in the planning stage for about two and a half years. We're currently raising funds to support this, and we started looking at properties throughout South Kingstown, Peasdale, Wakefield area within the last couple of weeks. One of the unique things about this cafe is that coin, and the coin has a number of purposes. It's going to be used for purposes of paying for your meal when you come to the cafe, so you can exchange it in exchange for a meal. They can also be purchased at $10 apiece and then given back to the Johnny Cake Center. We will get them to people that need a meal. A person can volunteer at the Johnny Cake Center, or maybe even at the cafe, or another agency throughout town, and if they volunteer for an hour, they're going to be given a coin in exchange for a meal, so in essence, they're working for food. They also can be given to anyone, maybe as a gift, stocking stuffer, consider it like a gift certificate to a restaurant, and they can be kept as a collectible, and you'll notice that yours have very low numbers on them. Again, the cafes, they run on a principle of 80-20%, so 80% of the patrons will pay what they can for the meal, or more, as a way of paying it forward, and 20% will pay less, or will be eating for free, and that's the model that's been successful throughout the country. There's also a brochure there on the Hope Cafe with some frequently asked questions, so that later on, if you think of something you want to ask, you know, thought to ask me tonight, you should be able to have the answer in there. And we're currently going around speaking to many groups about the cafe, so I'll be happy to do that for anyone that would like it. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you again tonight, and I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions here at the table? Carol?
Sue, do you have a location for the Hope Cafe yet?
Not yet. That's the number-one question. We've looked at eight different properties, and probably can imagine some of them that are throughout town. We have a subcommittee of our board who's doing a kind of an analysis of what works, what will not work, and price, and all that kind of stuff, and there's a meeting at the end of this month to discuss those options. And we do have a third of the money right now that we feel that we'll need to get it up and running.
So, when is your, when do you think you're going to open?
We want to open it this year as part of the 40th anniversary, but that will depend on a number of factors.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Councilman Jim O'Neill is not able to be with us tonight, but he did want me to express, you know, his graciousness and support for all of the agencies, you know, and as he was talking to me on the phone, you know, it definitely was a snapshot of what Jim does represent. He supports all of, you know, the agencies in town, that, the human service agencies. So, I just wanted to share that, and we can't say enough for all of the work that you do, Susan, and, you know, your volunteer crew. It's just, it's unbelievable. So, how many years have you been doing this?
Let's see, eight. 2005.
2005.
And I love it every day.
Yeah. Well, it's just unbelievable, remarkable, and definitely, you know, meets the needs of the community. And with the cuts last year with the Community Design Block Grant, is your funding, you know, you getting some individual donations?
We are, but that funding hurt us as well as the money that we get from FEMA was drastically reduced, so, you know, we, you know, take a deep breath and figure out another way, I guess.
Right. So, we're on the TV cameras, if there's any, you know, individual donations to, to the Johnny Cake Center, or some of the other human service agencies that we have in town. I'm sure that they would welcome that with an open hand.
We would.
So, thank you.
Next agency was the Kane Child Development Center. Kane has requested the contribution of $9,000, which is the same level funding as they'd received in the prior year. I don't think there's anyone here from the agency. Next is the South County Community Action. South County Community Action has requested $25,000, which is a $1,000 increase over the current year appropriation. We have recommended, as in with all agencies, level funding amounts equal to the 1213 year. Certainly, it's within the province of the Council to make those adjustments. I would note that in two places within their application itself, the 25 and the 24,000 seem to be interchanged. The contributions for the South County Community Action, we're providing almost 46% of the local funding, yet our population share is about 15%. So, we are meeting fair share requirements with the, with the agency. If there's no questions, I'll move on. Next is Welcome House, and I believe that Ken's here.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you. Hello, Councilmembers. Mr. Alfred, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll be brief. Welcome House very much appreciates the opportunity to even approach the town and to renew our commitment to the town for emergency shelter services, transitional and permanent supportive housing services, as well as the soup kitchen. And I do have some statistics, I'll just rifle through them very quickly. Just over 4,800 bed nights were serviced at our shelter this past year. 17,000 meals at approximate cost of about $21,000 through our soup kitchen, and we provided opportunity for 2,200 community service hours through folks from the community coming into Welcome House, just to share opportunities to partner with, with our clients, mostly in our soup kitchen. And also, the guests of Welcome House have provided up to 5,600 hours of service in exchange for the services that they provide. They work in the soup kitchen, they do maintenance tasks through, as you know, with a tremendous amount of snow we've had throughout the year. We do offer to do shoveling services throughout Peasdale. So, again, I believe most of you are familiar with our program. We do have seven facilities throughout the Village of Peasdale. It's all within the town of South Kingstown, and we have 16 units within the emergency shelter, including a handicap unit. I did ask for an increase. I'll try to cut Mr. Alfred off at the pass here, and I did take a look at his assessment, and we understand that we've been requested to be level funded. I will appreciate any sort of consideration that the committee can give us, but again, we do have a unique situation here. We're uniquely entirely within the town of South Kingstown. About 45% of our services are directly going back towards South Kingstown residents, although we are a regional facility. So, with that, entertain any questions.
Meg?
Are your services 24/7?
That's correct.
Seven days a week, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions here at the table?
How is your coin, you still have the buckets for coins or up front, pennies, whatever it was?
We do. We have a little more interaction with individual businesses that collect money on our behalf and then donate directly into the shelter, but we do have the bucket that's still out there.
And how many, can you house them one night at the, at the shelter in Peasdale?
That's a great question. So, officially, I think it's 17. However, there are, you know, special accommodations for extreme circumstances, but we've worked with the town, actually, in the last storm when we lost power, we've actually gone over to the high school. But, but we've, we can pack people in, and we've done that before in the, in the dining area. It's not a permanent condition, it's just emergency situation. But 17 is official.
I know Meg asked the hours, but do they have to, do they go in at a certain hour, anyone who wants to stay there, and they have to be out in the morning? Is that the?
Yeah, there's a process by which, you know, you're generally registered during the day. We do have after-hours assistance, and our full-time staff that do go home for the evening are available 24/7. So, we do have overnight managers, as well as weekend managers, and, you know, we've got several Board members that are in the area, so we constantly have vigilant eyes over the, the operations in all of the facilities.
But, I mean, the residents, do they stay there all day?
They, thank you for that clarification. They, they are encouraged to get out. We have a full-case management program where we work with guests on an individual basis, and the intention is to encourage them, to work with them individually, depending on what their needs are. Some of them are out for various meetings and appointments, others are actively looking for employment. As we all know, it's, it's very difficult. Some of our guests are not fortunate enough to have driver's licenses, so that is a challenge we're very much aware of. We do partner with the Housing Resource Commission, and we do have access to Riptics, so it is a very active process of working with individual clients to basically get them out of the shelter during the day. I think that's your, your point. But, but not just to send them out for being out.
Yeah.
Out to be somewhere purposeful.
And do you get many families?
We do. We had, forgive me, I think we had four families this, this past year that actually went through the shelter and then, and then to the support of permanent housing. So, so we do have kind of a graduated program. You know, the intention is to move folks on, and as some of them do get attached to the program, we ultimately have to push them out into full-supported, or just, just temporary, excuse me, supported or unsupported permanent housing.
And just one more question. The children get enrolled in South Kingstown schools if they're our children?
Yes.
Ken, is there a maximum stay, like, three months with the 17 beds at the Welcome House, or is there, you know, can they stay for a full year if the need be?
It's on an individual basis. I'm not sure what the cap is. We do have a cap, though. The average stay has been just under 60 days. So, it is, again, on a case-by-case basis, some of, some of the folks stay much shorter. Rarely do they stay longer, though. They, they need to move on, and that's the yeoman's work of the staff, to really work with them individually, to find purpose and to get them back out.
Right. Meg?
I had heard the 17-bed restriction, that's what your capacity is. Do you have situations, of course you might, where you have several more than that? How do you deal with those situations, and where do you go from there with those people?
We have a, and again, just, I am on the Board, so I, I've been learning quite a bit over the last several months, but generally speaking, we have a great network with all of the other shelters throughout the state, and the staff on a first-name basis have personal cell phone numbers, and if we can't house somebody for whatever reason, we're actively working the telephone network to try to get folks placed. I know that there's a, what they call a wet facility that was recently closed in West Warwick. We received some frantic phone calls just this past Friday evening, trying to place individuals into Welcome House, and we're a sober facility, we couldn't take them, but we, we're constantly working with all the other shelters throughout the state. We do have capacity to have folks stay in very cramped quarters in our dining area, but again, it's not, it's not preferable, and, and we try not to accommodate that unless it's, you know, a really difficult weather condition or
Of course.
extenuating circumstances. So, we have done that before, and unfortunately, we'll have to do that again if there's no other alternatives.
Other questions here at the table?
Just a comment. I want to make sure the Council's aware that in addition to the 17-bed shelter, there's five units that are project-based, Section 8 units, that are owned by a Welcome House and are managed through Welcome House. The, there's also nine shared living units that are managed through the agency as well. So, with each of these, there are caseworkers available to be able to work with that client base. The, the program, as established, was to have people stay no longer than 30 days with an extension up to 90 days, and for them to be drug and alcohol-free during the entire time of the stay, as well as that they would be seeking work during the daytime, daytime hours. Obviously, they have to work with the client base itself on, with flexibility on that, but this is a much broader program than just simply the shelter, and I want to make sure people are aware of that, because that also deals with some of the costs that the agency ends up incurring, one, to pay for the mortgages on the real estate that houses these units, and secondly, to be able to provide for the upkeep of those units, and with the rental structure. As a Section 8, the individuals would pay no more than 30% of their income, and the agency would get full-market value, but it's still going to be very tight in terms of what the cost of maintenance are based on the age of those, those living units.
Thank you very much.
And Steve, or Ken, what is the maximum capacity with all of the units combined that possibly could be, you know, opened up for a need?
I don't know if there's a, there's a number on the shared units. The, the five Section 8s are really just family units. I believe that they're two- and three-bedroom units. The bed count is 17 on the shelter.
Yeah, and it's 16 on the other separate properties throughout Peasdale, so it's 17 plus the 16.
And are there any services for families that have children that may need tutoring with any money through the state with McKinney-Vento funds that you're aware of? No?
Part of that's through the referral process, where when they do the intake, they look at what the service needs are of a family or, or that client base, and they do have direct referrals with other agencies to be able to provide those type of services. And obviously, if the children were enrolled in the school system, that coordination would go through the school department itself.
Thank you. And again, you take individual donations from anyone who's interested?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, again, yeah, we just, this is a community that gives and gives, so hopefully that will come to fruition as well. But Ken, again, we thank you and your Board for all of the work that's done, and we'll have the discussion with that $2,000 probably later tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, we need to go back because the Thundermist, Nicole Quindazy is here, and I think I went too fast to see her hand go up, but I know that she wanted to
Good evening. My name is Nicole Quindazy. I'm the Executive Director at Thundermist of South County, and I want to thank you all for inviting me here and giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So, Thundermist has been in existence for over 40 years, and our mission is really very simple. It's to deliver the highest quality health care when and where it is needed most, in an affordable manner, in a language everyone can understand with dignity and respect. I'm sure some of you are already familiar with the services that we offer. We do provide care to South County residents. 24% of our clients are privately insured, 40% have Medicaid, Rite Care, Medicare, and 36, 36%, excuse me, are uninsured. Now, at Thundermist, we do not turn anyone away based on an inability to pay for services, so we offer primary care, health, and dental services on a sliding scale for those who qualify, and we also provide free care to those who qualify. A few things that you may have heard about us, our big accomplishments in this past year. First, it was in the newspapers, and you may have heard that HERSA, the federal government, did grant us a very generous $5 million grant to build a new facility, and we are working on breaking ground later this year. We plan to build a 20,000-square-foot facility, and we'll be increasing our capacity significantly. So, we're very, very excited about that. The, the reason that we're here today, you know, people might say, "Well, you don't need any money." The money that we received is to build a new building. I mean, that, that actually won't cover the whole building. We'll be doing a capital campaign to raise additional funds. But really, the money that we're seeking from South Kingstown is to help us provide care, free care, and discounted care to those uninsured South Kingstown residents. We served 2,406 patients in our medical department from South Kingstown last year, and that was up from 1,650 patients the prior year. And our dental program, we have a general dentistry program that serves people of all ages, and last year, we served 1,208 South Kingstown residents, and that was up from, actually, it was slightly down, 1,271, almost the same from the prior year. We also served approximately 835 We also served approximately 835 patients in our WIC department. And we provide behavioral health services. And we have social services to help the clients access the free care and the sliding scale, pharmacy assistance, free prescriptions, and discounted prescription care as well. One of the things that makes Thundermist uniquely different from the other community agencies is in June, we opened our new quick-care department. And this has been very exciting for everyone who's been involved in it. And we've received wonderful feedback from the community so far. We are open 365 days a year for walk-in medical care. And rather than being charged, you know, a very pricey co-pay that you might get at an urgent care or a hospital emergency room, we only charge an office visit copayment. So a person can walk into Thundermist, not already be an established patient, just coming off the street. Maybe they're visiting from out of town or maybe they're a resident. And we will see them. They'll have a regular office visit copayment. If they qualify for free care or discounted care with the sliding scale, they'll be charged lesser amount or nothing at all. They'll be treated immediately, seen immediately and treated. So it's wonderful because we're able to expand our hours. So we're open from, the quick-care stays open till 9:30 at night on weekdays. And we're open on Saturday, Sunday, and every holiday from nine to five. And so we really are able to provide access to care to people who might not get it otherwise. Very, very proud of that. So last year, we provided $1,278,965 in free care to South Kingstown residents. The amount that we're asking for is to help compensate part of that. Clearly, no agencies or governments can help us provide all of that. But that is the reason why I'm here tonight. And I do appreciate the opportunity to tell you about Thundermist. And I'd be very happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Nicole. Questions here at the table? Carol?
The new building, is it going to be in the same location?
Yes, it is. It's going to be, hopefully, right on the same lot, in our parking lot.
Wow.
So we're hoping to break ground this coming August, remain completely operational during construction, and finish construction at the end of 2014, move over into the new building.
Nice. And you're going to keep the old building, too?
No, that building will come down. We need the space for parking.
Ah.
And it's over 100 years old.
Makes sense, yeah.
It's a lot to maintain.
Sure. Well, that'd be nice.
Very nice.
Wow. Meg?
Is the gamut of your care what you see particularly? What is the age group or is it?
We see all ages from birth to the end of life in our family practice. Quick-care sees children two and up, and dental is all ages as well.
Thank you.
Could you explain a little bit about your behavioral health, healthcare?
Sure, yes. We have two behavioral health clinicians who, their patients are referred to them through our primary care physicians. We also have one psychiatric nurse practitioner who can prescribe medications. And working together with our primary care physicians as well as our social services, we're able to help people access free and discounted psychiatric drugs as well, which is also rather unique.
Great need, yeah. Do these behavioral health service people do any work with the school department?
I'm not aware of any.
That's great. I know there's definitely, that is definitely lacking. So I'm really surprised that is available at Thundermist. I'm very happy about that, yeah. Other questions here at the table? All right, this is remarkable. We had Polly Eddy, who was on our town council. I'm sure that she's still, is she still the president?
Polly's on our board of directors. And she also attends the advisory committee that I have locally. And she's a wonderful, wonderful lady.
Yeah.
Very lucky to have her part of our organization.
And I don't know if it was last weekend or the weekend before, you had a celebration for Maria Montanaro.
We did. That was actually just this week. It was at our annual meeting. And Maria was honored with one of our annual awards.
Yeah, just two great people. So this is, we're lucky to have you in our community.
Thank you so much. Everyone's been very welcoming.
Yeah, so thank you. Any other questions for Nicole? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you all very much.
Next agency is the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County. I'm not sure, Mary's not here, is she? The request from the agency was for support in the amount of $5,000, which was level funding from the current year. Next agency is the Education Exchange. Requested funding was $2,500. Please come on up.
Hi, Peg. I have to stop by asking, how was the first coffee? I never made it over there on Friday.
Fabulous. It was, thank you for the chamber, too. We had about fifty, fifty-five people there and it was a rousing success. And it was great to introduce people to the Education Exchange who had not been there before. It's good to see you too, Meg.
Great.
I know. For those of you who don't know about the Education Exchange, we're actually celebrating our 35th anniversary this year. And because of the support of the town of South Kingstown and the other towns in Southern Rhode Island, we're able to do this. We were formerly known as the Washington County Adult Learning Center. I really cannot thank the South Kingstown Town Council enough for all of your support, especially in these last few years because it's been very difficult for us moving, especially moving from one site to another. But I must say, in doing so, we're more part of the community now than we had ever been before. So we're very thankful. It was a blessing in disguise for us to be able to make that move. What we do with the Education Exchange, our primary goal is to help people get to the place they need to be, to help them with GED preparation, English as second language, workforce training, computer training, and we also are the GED testing service for Southern Rhode Island. Our challenge now is, in the last five years since I've been the director, our overall funding has decreased almost $100,000. So it's very difficult for us in this time of economic turmoil to help our clients be as successful as they can be and give them those resources to help them do that. I'm very grateful for the support, for the monies that are given by the town to us. And they're able to compensate for some of the loss of funding that we have in other areas. So I appreciate that very much. Right now, currently, we, of the number of South Kingstown residents, last year, last fiscal year, we served approximately 864 people from throughout Southern Rhode Island. And of that amount, about twenty percent of that number was from South Kingstown. So one of the areas that I forgot to mention, which is very germane at this time of year I've just come from, we also run a free volunteer income tax assistance, which is sponsored by the IRS. And we do run that on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And it's free to individuals whose income is $51,000 or less. So then we have, all of our volunteers are IRS-trained. All of our staff also are credentialed by the Rhode Island Department of Education as well.
Questions for Peg? Carol?
Yeah, Peggy, as far as the GED, are you, the new requirements with the Department of Education, are they affecting you also?
They are seriously affecting us. And as a matter of fact, what's happening right now with us is that we're in the process of trying to raise approximately $75,000 because we need to get in place the infrastructure in order to be able to not only teach our students how to take the GED on the computer. All of the paper and pencils are going away. And as of January 2nd, 2014, the GED will all be computer-based. So we need, what we're trying to do now is to develop the infrastructure at our site in Peasdale to become a Pearson View Certified GED Testing Center.
And is there extra requirements besides that?
The tests, the current test will be updated and the test will be aligned to the Common Core standards.
And how many GED students do you think you get every year?
Approximately, the GED students, it ebbs and flows. Last year, we had 160 students for the GED.
That's hot. That's great. I mean, I've known a few kids from the high school that have gone over to your program and have been successful, so.
We have a real great cadre of teachers who are very, very vested in seeing to the success of the students that come to us. And it's not your typical sixteen-year-old either. I mean, we do get a number of, especially with the changes in the portfolio requirements. We do get a number of those students. But also, we get a lot of people who have lost their jobs because of economic situations and have found that their education credentials won't take them anyplace. So those jobs that perhaps didn't need a GED when they started, they do now in order to compete. So and those are, that's the profile of who we're helping to. Those people who have been laid off that need education and retraining and need to get a GED, so.
I have a few questions, Peg. Do you want to talk a little bit about, you're still doing work with Linda Soderberg?
We are doing some work with the Exeter Job Corps, yeah.
Exeter Job Corps? And is it job training that you do with the kids?
We had been in the past, they were sending their students to us for GEDs. We do, we also have a teacher assistant training program, which is approved by the Rhode Island Department of Education. So a person coming through that program and then also passing the PARA protest would be a suitable candidate to be employed in a school system.
That's great. And about, how many volunteers, off the top of your head?
We have over thirty volunteers in all of our different locations. We're based in North Kingstown and we also have a site in Westerly as well. But Peasdale is our home.
And with mention that Carol had made with the new requirement, you know, with the Rhode Island Department of Ed, kids cannot drop out until they have a plan. Is the school department working with you?
Yes, yes. We work very closely with the guidance department here in South Kingstown. And they've been very supportive of that. So what the process is, is that the student will work with, the student and the parent will work with the guidance department and the principal and the superintendent. And then we will then work with the student. But they need to have a plan in place that's approved.
And my last question is, with the GED going online and the requirement from, you know, Rhode Island Department of Education, are there any technology funds that are coming your way through, right? There's not. That's a shame.
It's all on our ticket.
That's too bad.
That's our challenge.
You should mention that to our legislators. Well, again, I know many children and you definitely, you know, do wonderful work with a lot of the young adults and adults as well in the community. So kudos. Thank you.
The next agency is the Washington County Coalition for Children. They have a funding request for the 13, 14-year at $1,000, up from the $400 that was provided in the 2012, '13 year. Do we have anybody on the agency? If not, that takes us through the contributions to private agencies. The total level funding amount remains at $145,400. Following with the agenda, if you go to General Fund, page 25, we'll go to the municipal boards and outside agencies. The first agency is the town's funding of the Conservation Commission. Again, with these agencies, all of those are level-funded at the amount provided in the 2012, '13 year. This is monies that would be directed as far as any adjustments through the town council. First agency was Conservation Commission at $850. Second agency is the Narrow River Preservation. Narrow River Preservation Association is a recommended appropriation at the $500 level. I knew that, we have, I think we've got Richard Grant, is he here? Richard, if you've got any comments, you want to come forward? Could you use the microphone for us, too, please?
Hello, yes, thank you. Testing, testing. I'm Richard Grant, president of the Narrow River Preservation Association. And I want to thank you for continuing the program. Hopefully, you'll consider that. But if you don't, my purpose here this evening is to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about the Narrow River Preservation Association. And I'll do it as fast as I can. From my desk, I'm reporting that the Narrow River Preservation Association is moving forward on every program. The River Watch program is now in a digestible data form on NRPA website. College Scholarship Program has recently increased the monetary award. And the program has been expanded to more schools in the North Kingstown, South Kingstown, and Narragansett area through which Narrow River runs. Science Fair Awards Program is a little bit questionable now because science fairs have dropped off at the schools. Last night at our monthly meeting, we presented a science fair award and a gift to the students that came and spoke about their program. River Watch monitoring stations now total 14. And the samples are processed through the URI Watershed Program. The NRPA programs, water, land, and education are financed in part from numerous sources. Fundraising events include the NRPA Annual Road Race Run and Walk, now in its 26th year. The race is a certified event noted for its visual and safety features. The Mile Turnaround Swim is in its eighth year and has been garnered to be one of the most pleasing swim events of the season as it's settling, as it's setting is at the URI Boat Club and goes down the river and comes back up to the boat club. It is being promoted as a training event for the Save the Bay event. The Pedestal Squambs that paddle originates at Middle Bridge and is noted for its family orientation. Through generosity of the residents, South Kingstown, North Kingstown, and Narragansett, a membership response is recorded each year. In a tri-town approach, North Kingston, South Kingstown, and Narragansett, the town tax role of those cities assists NRPA's $52,000 budget. For special projects, Hannah Street Incorporated writes grants at no charge that assist in special projects. Of course, we receive funds when we have a program that fits the Rhode Island River Council. The state of Rhode Island also contributes some money and of course, we get money from the federal government. And a shared program with Wood Park, Kentucky Preservation Association helps to meet the budget. As NRPA enters its 43rd year of protecting the Narrow River watershed, it works with such agencies as Narragansett Detention Ponds Program, Water Garden Information Program, Save the Bay and its Bay Friendly Backyards Program, Cleanup Day, working with the South County Museum, Narrow River Land Trust, Autobahn, National Wildlife Refuge, the Gilbert Stuart Museum, and the Narragansett Land Conservancy Trust. The Essential Narrow River Water Testing Program functions as a baseline of information that is used for programs by the three towns, the state and the federal government, to provide data and provide information to the public. NRPA is a volunteer organization with one part-time employee. The important elements of NRPA are mailed to 33,000 residents in the Narrow River watershed once a year. And the newsletter, excuse me, newsletter is mailed by paid membership and available on the NRPA website. Richard Grant, president. Richard Grant, President, NRPA. Basically, we protect the watershed. That is, when something's going wrong or something needs to be looked at, NRPA steps up, hires lawyers, and stops whatever's going on. And we've done that with a lot of the towns in the North Kingston, South Kingston, and Narragansett area, building communities because they didn't meet code. So, a normal program of water testing is used by the towns and by the state and the federal government and that cost makes up about 35% of our budget. And so tonight, I just wanted to come in, say hello, thank you for your help. We've, we used to have like an even amount from each town and, but because of expenses and because of the way, you know, the things are going in the economy, we appreciate whatever you can do, but if you can't do anything, I'm just happy to meet with you from time to time or just come in and tell you what we're doing so you're up to date on things. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to come in. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Richard. Any questions here for Richard?
I just want to say thank you. I know firsthand what you do and I know you give your heart and soul to that organization, so I'm pleased to see that you're still involved. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Carol?
Richard, do you get a higher contribution from the other two towns? I see you asked for 500, right?
Yeah. Well, the way it works is that we get $2,700 from North Kingstown and we get that from the Water Department because we, there's an aquifer in the Narrow River from North Kingstown and they use our data and they pay for like three, you know, each testing site costs about $900 and times 14. And so, the point being is that from North Kingstown, they feel it's a very important source and nobody else is taking these measurements the way we are and now the data is available on the web. Last year, we got a grant of almost $5,000 from Rivers Council to hire somebody to take that data so the average person or scientist can look up data. Narragansett, there's been some controversy as to payment to Narrow River last year and that was unfortunate that that happened and I'm not sure anybody knows the details of that, but the point is that we received $3,000 from the town in Narragansett. Grady Miller was one of the few people in my 43 years of working with NRPA that came to our board meeting, got to know us, went to our sites, saw what we were doing, and understood what we were doing. And whatever happened after that, that's his business. But as far as we were concerned, we hoped that that would have continued. I can tell you that it did not continue the next year. And so, and with South Kingstown, I believe that we stopped getting payments as we've had for years, the year before last, and then last year, we were able to get $500 and we appreciate that. And I guess it made me feel good that we, wasn't, we weren't getting it and then we started to get some money again. And so the load was shared with the three towns. But then, and I don't know what's going on in Narragansett right now, but I will be meeting with the Town Council in Narragansett in order to do what I'm doing tonight is to say hello and to just answer any questions or tell you that we're a very viable agency and that we do some things that nobody else is doing. And it's water. There's only 2% in the world, in the world that's drinkable, so it's important.
Wonderful river, water body. But you said you had 14 testing sites?
Yes.
How many of those are in South Kingstown?
Can't answer that right now. I can't answer that right now.
Probably doesn't matter.
The rivers in some places, while there's a site, it's only about 30 feet wide, now a river. In other places, there are lakes and so, I know that Mumford Brook, we have a test site at Mumford Brook, we have one at Middle Bridge, we have one at Sprague Bridge and I could look up the data, but the point is that the 14 sites have been strategically placed and also they're placed at the, like in front of a detention pond that's been created. And there are five detention ponds of the 11 proposed, created so far. And we're involved in the, our database is used along with DEM to provide for those sites. And then we test in front of that site so that over a five-year or 10-year period, we'll get to understand whether the detention pond is having, you know, what's happening. And also, you know, the sewers in Narragansett have helped, but with, the pollution in Narrow River comes from runoff, you know, and fertilizers and animals and birds and it's hard, it's not like you have a factory where you can pinpoint it and correct it. So, the rain gardens that we're promoting and the detention pond system, each one of those systems costs a million dollars and hopefully that the economy in this country will get better and so that we can build the rest of those detention ponds. And I hope that the pipes that are in South Kingstown and in North Kingstown will be looked at. And I think there's an agency looking at pipes right now flow into Narrow River. I'm quite sure there is.
We've got an engineering contract right now dealing with the TMDL issues for Narrow River. I will correct you on one thing. Not all the pollution in Narrow River is coming from pipes. Much of it is coming from the geese and the waterfowl that populate that area.
You're correct on that, that it's hard to pinpoint where that duck is going to be. And so it's runoff and, you know...
It's easy to know where they've been.
So, as a group of citizens and getting a lot of support from the community, we're able to meet our budget every year. I can only say that in the last couple of years, it's been a shifting base. That is, we have to continue to try to get money from any source that we can and I try very hard to increase the membership from where it stands now at about 12% of the three towns' residents up to, you know, like 15 or, you know, hopefully go to 20 because people love Narrow River, people respect what we're doing and I'm just trying to get everyone to share. You know, some people just think that NRPA is doing a great job and then there are other people, you know, and we understand that, that just don't have time to think about it, that they're busy doing other things. So, tonight, my goal tonight was to come in and introduce myself to you, tell you a little bit about Narrow River, which you probably already know, but I don't take that, I don't assume that because you're new to some of these programs that we offer. And I can only say that, you know, having young people getting a science fair award last night just made me feel good that there'll be, when I'm not around, there'll be other people that are interested in the environment and so it's just a good feeling.
The only question I have, Richard, is do any of the students from URI do any of the water testing or work with Narrow River Preservation Association? Any support from URI?
DEM does water, DEM does water testing in certain places and also Newport Boys and Girls Club, they also do a couple of sites and, but, we don't know what they do with our data and DEM, when they have a project, they ask us for our data. And the town in Narragansett, when they were putting in the detention ponds, they use our data as a base in order to get federal funding.
So there's no connection with URI, the work that you do?
The water is tested, the water's tested at URI, URI Watershed Watch.
And do any of the students from URI do some of the testing?
We have 40 people that are involved in the water testing program and I don't know the background on each one of those people, but sometimes we have families that do it. We have, you know, a father and a son do it and it becomes a family affair and some of our water testing people have been doing it for 20 years, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Our next outside agency is the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. Who's coming up, Richard?
My name's Dick Pike and I've been on the chamber board probably as long as Mr. Alfred's been the town manager, so we both go way back. One of the reasons I wanted to explain that the chamber asked for an increase in our funding to 12,000 this year, because we really consider it an investment rather than a contribution. A healthy business community will return this investment to the town of South Kingstown many times over through increased commercial tax base in the town, increased hotel tax revenue, which the town gets a share of, and an increased meals tax revenue, which the town receives a share of and it amounts to a considerable amount, I believe over $500,000. And hotel taxes, $50,000 or $60,000 maybe, in that range? Okay. The chamber provides many services to local businesses, help them succeed, and it's really critical to the town to have a healthy business community. So we feel that this investment is something that's going to come back to the town time and time again. In addition to helping the local businesses, we provide a tourism service. We get thousands of calls a year from people from out of state wanting to come to the town of South Kingstown. They ask about the beaches, the hotels, where to eat, the restaurants. So we provide a service which I believe that nobody else in the community is providing at this time and it's just one of the things that we provide. That also helps local businesses succeed, which also again, helps the tax base. And having a very robust and healthy summer tourist crowd is definitely a boon to the community. Again, if you're here in the summertime, some people might consider it a nuisance, but it's very difficult to get into some of the better restaurants. If you go to, for instance, a Matuna Glister Bar, you can usually wait for an hour or more to try to get into, for a meal. And I would say that the town gets a healthy tax revenue from that. So although we're very pleased that you do have us in for the 7,000, we'd really like you to consider giving as much as you can and consider an investment rather than a contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions here at the table for Dick? Richard Pike?
I have a question. Sorry. I don't know, I should probably not even ask this question because I've been involved with the chamber for many, many years and it's been a long time. But in the appropriation that's been given, where is that money being spent? How is that being given back? Is it through proactive programs or economic development issues?
Well, I would defer to Elizabeth if she wants to answer that question because I don't, she deals in a day-to-day management of the chamber and I do not, so let me let her speak to that.
Thank you.
You stay right there. Sit down, there's two seats.
My name is Elizabeth Berman. I am the Director of Mission Development for the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. The money goes towards a number of programs that we have. One of them is a scholarship program that we do. We offer a $500 scholarship to a senior and we actually just opened that up so it's going to go towards the entire Southern Rhode Island area as opposed to just South Kingstown. It also goes towards hanging and installing and maintaining the holiday banners that are hung on Old Tower Hill Road and Route 108 from the day after Thanksgiving until right after New Year's. So the money goes towards that as well. And it also goes towards opening up our chamber on the weekends during the busy tourist season. So normally, we are open from Monday through Friday, but from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we do extend our hours to include Saturdays as well. And we have seen a huge demand for that. We've been very busy on the Saturdays that we are open. So one of the reasons for the increase is also to increase the amount of summer hours that we are open because we have been very busy during that time period. And that's where most of the money goes towards.
As a point of clarification, I guess I want to follow up and say, is any of those funds aside from what you need to do to increase hours in the summer, used for your administrative costs?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Yes. Aside from summer hours, which you have an increased business, which you absolutely have to do, is any of that money used towards administrative costs or salaries, if you will, on a regular basis?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Are you seeking contributions from the other towns that are now involved in the Southern Rhode Island Chamber?
We are not. 60% of our membership base is from the town of South Kingstown.
How was your gift certificate program this year?
Very, very well. We did great this year with gift certificates. It's a wonderful program. We have over 200 local merchants that participate in the gift certificate program. We sold hundreds and hundreds this past holiday season and it was just, it's a terrific way to keep the money local and to keep people shopping down here.
And has there been any work done with our Economic Development Committee? I know that there's some shared members, but has, or is that an interest that the chamber, you know, would like to do to reach out?
It is absolutely an interest of the chamber to reach out to every organization in the area, especially dealing with economic development. It's definitely something that we have on our radar and something that we're trying to do. And as we all know, everyone's short-staffed these days, so we try and be in as many places as possible. We have definitely been working on the connection with the town of South Kingstown as well and I can say that we have been adding information into our newsletter that has been provided by Andy Nada and it has been a huge success. We've had a huge, a great feedback from the information that we've been putting out that comes straight from the town.
Great.
Okay. Other questions here at the table? All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That was a great event tonight.
Our next organization is the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization. Come on down, Leslie.
Is there a prize?
Depends on what door you pick. Door number one, door number two.
There is, $3,000 available for you.
I'm going to have to beg for this. Leslie Schwannad, I am the President of the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization and just to tell somebody a little bit about it, you people all know about it anyway, but yeah, this year we asked for a little increase. What we've been doing is, first of all, we participate with the town. Every year, we work with Terry Murphy on the gala. We provide the horse and wagon. We also provide John O'Malley as a Santa Claus, so, he's our local high school teacher in case somebody doesn't know that. And we will be working with Terry. We're going to start in August to expand some of our participation for the gala. So we did ask for some increases. However, we did get some outside funding last year. We got the Royal Little Foundation Scholarship for $2,000 and to this day, I don't know who recommended us, but we did get that. And we did use the funding. Now, last year, we used the funding for the gala. We also did, on a small scale, a community block party, which we want to extend maybe next fall to do something a little bigger and I haven't talked with my whole board yet about it, but maybe an art stroll in conjunction with that. We're in the talking stages and we've got some other ideas that we'd like to try, but right now, we're just in the talking stages. We are expanding our board. I have asked some local businessmen to be on our board and they've accepted, so that's going to help us too. Let's see. And, oh, and I did apply and I've been working with Doug, I will be working with... And, oh, and I did apply, and I've been working with Doug, I will be working with Doug McLean. We did submit something for the Community Development Block Grant. So Doug and I will get together soon to talk about that and see if we can get any funding for that. So that, and that money, we would like to use for planting and actually maybe commissioning some more art projects to go along with the bike path, because we'd like to start to make that more of an art center. And so that's, those are some of the things that we, we have some other ideas, too, that I'm thinking about with my board. I haven't talked extensively with them, but some of it may involve some youth that we'd like to get some maybe funding for. So that's why we've asked for the extra thousand dollars. But as he said, we might get three thousand dollars. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. I see what you said, level funding. Well, maybe's good enough for you. From you, that's pretty good.
I agree with that.
But, you know, just as an aside, and now I'm going to butter you up, but no. I probably, right after this, will leave the meeting, because I don't usually stay for the budget. And the reason I don't is because I do think these guys do a really good job. And I know our money is safe. And I know I'm probably not going, it's so safe, I probably won't get that extra money. But really, they do deserve a good job. Alan and Steve do do a good job. I don't worry about our money. I guess we're the only, one of the few communities that's in the black, correct?
We're always in the black.
Well, I know, we're always in the black, because you're not going to give me the extra thousand dollars that I want.
Oh, Leslie, you're a peach.
Anyway, anybody have any questions?
We're going to try and squeeze it out of them, though.
Well, he did mention three thousand. So if we got, like, fifteen hundred, I'd be happy.
Good night, Leslie.
Any questions here for Leslie?
Leslie, wasn't it last year you came in looking for a cover on the bus stop or something? Wasn't that your organization?
Yeah, we, yeah, we did, we were working with Vin Murray on that. And actually, Andy was a part of it, too. We had the stake come down, et cetera. And we did put in, in the Community Development Block Grant for that, but we didn't get it. So, but these guys were great, too. We all did the walk around, and the stake came down, and we did put in, but we didn't get it. So I hadn't even thought about that this year, because it would be an expensive venture. So if we can get some money, I didn't put a big, high number, you know, hopefully, we'll get something out of the Community Development Block Grant. But I'll be meeting with Doug next week, I think. He's going to be meeting with me.
Thank you, Leslie.
Again, all that you do for our community. Yeah, it's just, it's wonderful. And the gala event, and the lighting of the tree, and the block, you know, the block parties, everything, you just give, give. And Peasdale looks wonderful.
Well, yeah, but now we have that big mound of snow in our little park there. I'm hoping it all melts, so we don't have to replace the benches. And let me just say something about Terry Murphy, too, working with her. She, you know, we have a lot of good people to work with. We may not get the money, but we always get the support. And, you know, anytime I call Rex Ebeli, because somebody's left a mattress in the parking lot or whatever, they're right there to do whatever they have to do. So we do get the support. Maybe not the money, but we do get the support.
Leslie, you get the value of three thousand dollars.
See, that's how he's going to get around it. Thank you very much.
Leslie, thank you.
Next agency is the Washington County Regional Planning Council. The council has requested, as they have in past years, an increase from the three thousand to six thousand dollars. Again, my budget has provided you with level funding on each of those agencies. Is there anyone here? I didn't see Jeff come in. If not, we'll move on. The South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. We provide this as support for the agency as a local match that's necessary for the grants that they receive, both from the state and federal government. The four thousand dollars goes toward operating expenses. The next agency is the Downtown Merchants Association. They have, too, have asked for forty five hundred dollars and have received in past years, a thousand dollar contribution from the town. Is there anyone here from that agency? There is not. And the last of the outside agencies is Washington County Community Development Corporation. And I know Marilyn Cohen is here on behalf of that agency. Marilyn?
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Cohen, and I'm here representing the Washington County Community Development Corporation. Usually, Jeff Marshant is here in this seat, but he had another commitment, so he sent me on his behalf. Welcome. Thank you. I am a board member. I'm also a South Kingstown resident. Our board is made up of residents from all of Southern Rhode Island. So I'm pleased to be representing South Kingstown on the board, as well as being a board member. I wanted to first thank you for the past support that the town has given to the Washington County CDC, and also to thank Mr. Alfred for including us in the proposed budget for this year. We are an organization whose mission is to help the Southern Rhode Island communities meet their need for affordable housing. And it's been, it's been a challenging time, especially with the downturn in the market in the last few years. But we are, we have, do have a lot of projects in our pipeline. We have about ninety-five units that we're working on right now. Not as many in South Kingstown as we'd like to. But sometimes, we have to take the projects that come to us and work with what opportunities we have. And we, most of the ones we've been working on in South Kingstown have been single-family houses, single-family homes. So I don't have a large presentation. I'm here mostly to answer any questions you might have, and just to say thank you again for your support in the past, and encourage you to continue that into the next budget.
Thank you, Marilyn. Questions here at the table for Marilyn? Are you staying current on some of the requests for the legislators with affordable housing?
We are. We're, we understand that the community planners have been talking about some, proposing some changes to the legislation. And I think that will probably affect the municipalities more than it will affect us, because we are driven by the need for affordable housing, as opposed to any state mandate.
And do you get involved with Habitat for Humanity with building some of those houses?
Actually, right now, we're about to start a project in a partnership with Habitat for Humanity and Church Community Housing. The three organizations are going to be building seven homes in Charlestown. So we do, we, when the opportunity presents itself, we do need to work together. And I think resources are growing more scarce. And so we need these partnerships to make things work.
Other questions here at the table? Again, you know, we thank you for the service. It's definitely a need in all of the neighboring communities throughout, actually, throughout the whole state. So we appreciate the work that you do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Alfred.
Good night, Marilyn. That completes the, those organizations. We're now going to move back to the budget dealing with the Police Department.
Steve, I just want to ask the councilors if they want to have a conversation now or at a later time, if there's anything that you want to see increased, decreased? Or do you want to save the conversation for later?
Well, we probably should do it when we're all here.
I was going to say, it will give Jim the opportunity as well. So it's okay that we'll defer this conversation when Jim's present. Thank you.
All right. Vin, why don't you move forward? Police Department, the narrative is on page N23. The expenditure statement is on GF11. Let me put GF11 up.
Welcome.
I think you all know Jackie Correa, sort of, you want to introduce yourself. The Police Department budget increase is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven seventy. About a hundred thousand of that is tied up in terms of Personnel Services. Just in terms of background within the narrative, I think it's important to talk about the size of the department. The department currently is with seventy full-time members. Fifty-two are sworn officers, which is inclusive of the chief. Eight are dispatches, and there's ten within the civilian force, which deals with secretarial and records management. We have, at this point, ten officers that are moving through the step plan within the town, which means that they'll be getting bumps, as well as the normal two percent increases that have been forecast. A few will be getting longevity adjustments based on years of services with the department. Our normal complement would be fifty-five sworn officers. As I said, we've been working with fifty-two over the past several years. We have not replaced a few of the officers that have retired from the department. One of the things I'd also mention is that with the South Kingstown Police Department, we do have, under our labor contract, a requirement for minimum staffing. Minimum staffing with the Police Department provides for a requirement of a minimum of five police officers on for most of the week. And from Thursday, I think it's at three o'clock till seven o'clock on Sunday nights, the complement, minimum staffing requirement is six. To properly staff that size of a staffing plan requires approximately thirty-nine officers. This would provide us with an opportunity to go with a minimal amount of overtime requirements. Based on on-the-job injuries and based on retirements that have occurred, we're really operating right now with a complement of around thirty officers instead of the thirty-nine. We have hired five additional officers over the past, I think, the past twelve months. And with those five, we'll see a minimum of one will come back to us in March. We'll have a couple more before the start of the new fiscal year. And in late August, we'll be back to full complement. We'll still have the potential for three retirees coming up over the next twelve months. So I've built the budget, assuming that I would most likely have not thirty-nine, but probably between thirty-three to thirty-five, based on job injuries with the frequency that we see there. That's why what you see is the overtime that I've recommended in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. It's down from what I'm predicting the cost will be for current year, where we're estimating about a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar cost as far as overtime. But you can also see, while we're forecasting an over expenditure of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in OT, we're seeing roughly the same amount of a reduction in the full-time salaries, because we were going without offices because of the attrition factor associated with the retirements. We are looking at the hundred thousand dollar increase. I remind the council that in the current year, there was no salary increases. There was an extension of the police contract. That extension provided a zero increase for all of the existing officers. Therefore, in planning for the thirteen, fourteen year, we're looking at a wage base that really goes back to eleven, twelve. So that's where we're seeing the hundred and two thousand dollar requirement. I do want to also mention the increase in the four hundred series. Four hundred series provides for equipment acquisitions. We buy police vehicles through the four hundred series. You can see the four-ten accounts as police vehicles. We're in for six vehicles. Four will be marked police cars, and two will be the unmarked police cars that are necessary within the, within the department itself. In addition to that, we've got replacement items on the AED units that are in the police cars, the defibrillators. We're looking to start replacements on that. There's one that will be in replacement. There's also two radar units that need to be replaced, and we need to do replacements on a couple of the light bars for the marked officers' vehicles. There's also general dollars of about five hundred dollars that I've, fifteen hundred dollars that's available for normal wear interior as far as furniture replacements. That includes everything other than the chief's chair.
I guess you don't get one.
The chief has gone through more chairs than any other department member that I'm aware of.
Thirty-two years, I went through one chair. Matter of fact, you fell off it, do you recall? Bobbly, and he didn't know what he sat on it, fell.
And I took that chair out of the dumpster, and he will be getting it back. On a very special day.
That's why he had you sit next, so he could get a new chair.
There's not much other change in the Police Department. We are seeing, you know, the normal increases for the fuels and lubricants. That's up about seven thousand dollars. We are looking at the reduction in the utility costs. We're looking at about an eighteen thousand dollar savings there. That is directly related to the lighting fixture replacement program. I'm not sure what else you've got in there as far as the reductions, Jack?
As far as the gas is also down as well.
The gas, the gas as well. So we're seeing some savings there, which allows us to be able to deal with the vehicles. Vin, you want to comment on the budget at this point?
No, I'm fine. You've said it all. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions here at the table for the chief? Carol?
Chief, you're probably familiar with the summer program they have in Narragansett for the offices that are, I don't know if they're officers. There are students coming from different colleges that are doing something with Narragansett in the summer on the bikes, or they're...
They do bike patrol, yeah, bike patrol and galley.
Have you seen, I've heard nothing but great things about that program, and I'm wondering if we could utilize it. I mean, I think some of these kids are getting college credits, like at Salve, URI, that are in the criminal justice program. I'm not sure, I was wondering if we could use anything like that, because obviously, you'd need a little more supervision in the summer, I would imagine, than...
I know Narragansett hires students, and they have some type of an appointment as a constable, and they give out parking tickets.
Oh, maybe that's it, yeah.
It seems to work pretty well for them, because they have that area in front of the seawall, where there's constant parking violations. We really don't have that type of terrain or atmosphere here in South Kingstown. I could look into it to see whether or not we can formulate some type of a program.
I've just heard very good things about it, because, you're right, it's very conducive to that in Narragansett. It's like, I think Block Island might have things like that also.
I can check with Vinnie Colone on Block Island. I'd be glad to do that. I haven't really determined a yawn cry for that type of service here in South Kingstown.
Well, if we don't need it, obviously, it's not important. But I was just wondering if you, if you thought so. But anyway, thanks.
Yeah, one of the things that I'd really like to see is be able to do more of, and it really comes down to whether we've got the complement available to do it, is putting the police on the bikes and the bike path and on Main Street, and in the Peasdale area. We've got trained officers for the bike patrol. Our problem comes in when the manning requirement comes into play, where we can't have the person on the bike that's counting toward the, toward the complement on the road. And if we, we would have to do it all through overtime hours. We have expended hours with the bike patrol that's on an OT basis. We've used it, for the most part, on the bike paths, Main Street, Peasdale, and it in Mattoon. And we've used it in the Mattoon area. But I think that if we were looking at summer resources, we would want to try to do the allocation in that manner. The problem that you have in terms of commissioning... The problem that you have in terms of commissioning constables of any type is the exposure and liability that's associated with them. Even though they're not carrying weapons or have the power of arrest, there's many times that because of the type of uniform that they're wearing, they're construed as being a peace officer and are not really equipped to handle the type of situations that they're involved in. If it's a simple action of having them on a bike issuing, you know, traffic tickets for no parking zones, that's one thing, but we've got, we're concerned with that and I would rather see us going with a full sworn officers. If I was going to have dollars set aside, I would want to have the dollars set to be able to provide for the bike patrols during the summer. That's the one that we get the most demand for and it's also the one that we get the most compliments on.
What, the bike patrol? Yeah. How many do you have on the bike patrol?
Well, two officers patrol in tandem together. So on any given day, when manpower allows so that we maintain our minimum manning, if we have extra, two extra officers, we put them on the bike.
I think there's six or eight that have gone through the program at this point that are available for the service? If that's what your question is.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got quite a few because they have to go through a training program to be able to be certified for that type of patrol duty.
Yeah, and they have, they wear special uniforms also and they have to be certified with a training curriculum. So, and, you know, those bicycles, those patrol bicycles, they cost about $800 each. They're not, they're not the typical bike that you see out in the road. They're, you know, they're really strong bikes designed for police patrol. They're even designed to walk and downstairs.
Wow.
Meg, did you have a question?
No, I just, I guess so, yes. Have you seen a lot of incidents on the bike path versus the amount of people that use it so that two people, you warrant two people is necessary for that?
I'm hearing you correctly. Two, two police officers patrol the bike path at the same time.
Yes. Yeah, have you had a lot of incidents on the bike path?
A lot of activity?
Well, I'm sure we have a lot of activity.
Any problems? Any problems on the bike path?
Yeah, that's my, that's what I'm asking.
Well, the answer to that question is no, simply because we're patrolling the bike path.
Great.
Occasionally, we have complaints of activity on the bike path, whether it be drug activity. Once in a while, we have an assault there, but I will say compared with other communities, our bike path is very safe.
That's great. That's great. I'm glad to hear that.
And when do you start the bike patrol? What season?
As soon as we can.
As soon as the weather is nice?
The weather breaks, yeah. And here again, as long as we have the manpower or the personnel to do it.
So it's mostly weekends? Is that when the highest use?
No, no. As often as we can, when we have the personnel, we put them out there.
I think that's great. Yeah, I've seen them on Main Street. I mean, obviously, that's a good spot too because it gets very congested in the summer.
As the town manager indicated, we've got great accolades from the public.
Yeah.
They like seeing you out there. That's the bottom line. They love seeing that.
Well, I think a police officer on a bicycle is much more approachable, you know, than coming by with a cruiser, right?
You know, when we started, when we started the bike patrol and we outfitted them, you know, with the helmets and the shorts and the jackets, we also had to buy padded underwear. And I said to myself, what is police service coming to?
I want to see you on that bike.
I may do it.
You know, Vinnie, sometimes there's too much information. You got him speechless.
It was true.
Chief, is there any updates on the school resource officer with changes in job description? With any changes, you know, happening in the schools?
We have a new, as you know, a new school resource officer, Jerry Gillen. He is as well-received as Monte was. He's doing a great job. And that's a program that has been embraced by not only the school department, but parents of students and the community in general. It's a, it's a good program. And we're going to continue that, especially with the situation with the potential of school violence, which is pretty prevalent throughout the country, unfortunately.
And will there be, are there plans being made for the awards ceremony or recognition ceremony that took place last year? Is that going to continue?
Continue that.
Yeah, probably this summer, will it be? Like in June or is there a month that? I think it was in June, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was June.
Yeah. And I just want to let you know that I had a CBI check done the other day and I couldn't believe it. It was Kevin, Officer Rin, one of the new police officers, and I believe Officer Marlowe. And my hands were so dry, they used all of that, whatever, whatever that stuff they put on to do the fingerprinting. It was just, they did a great job and I had it done on a Friday and I was cleared by Monday. So I couldn't believe the turnaround.
That's because you don't have a record.
I was saying, you're not a known criminal yet.
For a job that I applied for, then I needed to have a CBI checked and got fingerprinted. So I was expecting the ink on the fingers and I was just amazed on how it's done all electronically and it was quite interesting. But, so other questions here at the table?
I just have one and I think we went over this before, but the school violence that you just brought up, I mean, did you find that you had a lot of calls regarding that or do you have to change any of the way we respond to school incidences or have drills of some kind? I don't know.
My department participates in what they call active shooting seminars and training curriculums. We want to stay abreast of that, of those type of training sessions. In the budget, you may have noticed that we're going to purchase six patrol rifles to be carried in police cars. So we, we're cognizant, as most police departments are throughout the country, of the potential of school violence, so we're on top of it.
Right, thanks.
Other questions here at the table?
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll move on with the animal control program. The first is the road program. Overall cost is up $1,281. Our road program has one full-time employee and we also have two four-hour shifts on the weekend and three shifts after 4:00 in the afternoon. We deal with about 1,400 complaints a year that are investigated. Most of it is attempting to deal with neighborhood issues involving animals. The second component of our animal control program is the shelter. And Anne Marie's with us in the back. We have two full-time employees plus several part-time employees. The overall program cost for the shelter will be up about $11,481. We operate the shelter in conjunction with the town in Narragansett. Narragansett will pay us approximately $70,000 in contribution this year to offset costs associated with the animal population coming from that community. I think some of the narrative is important information as far as the type of empowerment with adoptions by owners. We're about 40% of all of the animals that come through our facility are going back to their, are going back. The empowerment's adopted by new animals is 40%, but the return, 52% of the animals that come through are returned to their owners. The ones that stay with us, 40% are adopted by new owners and 46% with off-site adoptions. We're still working in terms of an off-site adoption program with PetSmart?
PetSmart.
The PetSmart in Warwick where we take cat population of available felines and bring them to the storefront. Working with that organization, we also receive some support services in terms of food. That program has been, been very successful. The program also generates about $30,000 a year in donations. So the program's highly successful. We had the grand reopening of the facility, the new facility, last spring. We really don't have a full year of operation in the new shelter. As you can see, we had underestimated what the cost of the utilities was going to be. We're up about $3,300 in anticipated costs for utilities and another $3,900 as far as the heating fuel at this point. Hopefully, we've overestimated that and we'll be able to see some adjustments down with next year's budget. There are no changes in the size or the scope of the program, but I would like to give Anne Marie an opportunity if she, if she has some pearls of wisdom for you as far as our shelter operations.
I, I don't know if I have any pearls of wisdom. I know that we're trying to do things to be more active within the community. I know that we've reached out. I know that we are, have been very busy during the last storms, that we've been accessible to the general public. I know that the state, I spoke briefly to Andy Nada about this, the state has approached us about the possibility of being the regional disaster shelter in our area just to help like some of the South County area because they felt that having the volunteers over at URI, it might be more conducive to having them localized at our facility. So it's just kind of, they asked me if we'd even be potentially open to that idea. I said, we're open to it. We want to see what's involved and I'll approach the town and they can approach the town and we'll go from there. So I know that as much as sometimes people believe that in working with animals, it's a kind of a, you know, feel-good cuddly type thing and it really isn't. With, dealing with the emotions of humans is actually, it's such an elevated kind of craziness. This year, we've actually seen a lot of different things that I haven't seen over the years. We have had actually a lot of awful things happen, you know, with the storms, which we don't have so many happen at one time. We've had several house fires that the animals didn't make it. We've had owners who've passed away and the animals were left inside the housing. So we've had a lot of different things happen this year. So it's not all pearls. It's, sometimes it's really hard to deal with and you've gotten a lot of motions to deal with that as well. And then you have to work with the animals and get them re-acclimated and to go into a trust factor too. So we're dealing with quarantines as we have always dealt with. And I know last year, we had an increase in the skunk population, being positive for rabies. I think they're also, to a degree, might be expecting that this year. I know the skunks are already out and they're being a little bit apprehensive and overly cautious on any animals that may have caused either exposure to humans or domestic animals. So we've got a lot that we need to be aware of. So I just think that when you have a staff who's very well at kind of dealing with these types of cases and dealing with the emotions of people, that's important. I know that you guys talked about a lot of things that was happening with the police department. The animal control program is also a matter of public safety and that's important. It really isn't just, it, there's so much more involved than just taking care of animals. And we are still dealing with, like Mr. Alfred said, 50% of the animals are almost returned, 50% are adopted out. There is a minuscule amount that we are euthanizing, but that's to be expected when you're dealing with stray animal population in a municipal facility because cars do more damage than can be fixed. Some animals are seniors, some animals are sick beyond being helped and are being left in that condition. So we have to follow through and being responsible. And so there's a lot of factors that are involved in it. And it is nice with the new facility because this new facility allows us to properly separate the different populations of animals. Ultimately, I almost feel that we're seeing less spread of diseases within the facility so that if we have cats that have upper respiratory infections, we're keeping it localized in one part of the facility versus having it spread throughout. And as far as medical expenses are concerned, I think that's going to be helping us keep that at a minimum. We're also still receiving some degree assistance from PetSmart, which is very beneficial because they do supply our off-premise adoptions with food, water, cat litter, and cage space. We have one employee that goes up there about twice a week. We also have one volunteer who assists us with cleaning there as well. Being that we adopt out about 50, probably close to about 50% of our, the ones that we trans, that we have available for adoption, that's highly beneficial to us. That helps to decrease the necessary manpower within the shelter itself. So that helps to keep things at a minimum there. It's just, the program keeps blossoming and there's so much involved in it. It's amazing to see how it's gone from the South Kingstown Dog Pound of so many years ago to the South Kingstown Animal Shelter. And it's, it's really kind of neat to just see how it grow and how more possibilities keep opening up for it.
Questions for Anne Marie?
Yeah, I got a few questions. Anne Marie, when you have an estimated 1,400 number of animal complaints, is that calls from residents or is that actually ticketing an animal that's running a dog?
The animal complaints actually go into animal control road. Those go into the police department and those go to the animal control officers. So they have to follow up on that. That can be whether it's something like following up on a dog bite, following up on a loose animal complaint, following up on an animal such as wildlife acting strangely in someone's backyard. There's a lot of different factors. So those are complaints that are called in to the police department that the animal control officers follow up on.
And when you say 52% of the animals are returned to their owners, when, so if you pick up like a dog that's running at large?
Yep.
And most people come, eventually show up to get their dog because they're panicked that it's missing, so are those considered in that?
Yes, those are reclaimed. So they sometimes can be identified through old tags that might be on them, through a microchip that might be on them. We also do advertising. We're showing photos on like Craigslist and Facebook and advertising in the Narragansett Times, the Independent, all the different newspapers. So we're trying to get it out there as much as possible that certain animals have come into our facility. We scour different things. We have a lost and found book at the facility. So basically, we also periodically, if we have an animal that come, that comes in on a town line, we'll call the adjoining towns to see if there's a chance that it might be from that. So there has been occasion, like when I've contacted the animal control officer in Richmond, she goes, you know, that dog sounds familiar. It might be so-and-so's. So we'll call them on up and lo and behold, it is actually their dog. So we have had dogs and cats who've crossed town lines. We have had animals like, such as a cat who may have hopped on a delivery truck and taken a ride. And then we'll find that animal several miles away. So that does happen too.
Stand there is great, by the way. I just have to tell you that. I love the people there.
Thank you.
There was, I've heard through the grapevine that there was a possibility of North Kingstown being interested in joining with, being partnership. She had services with us. I don't know, Steve, if you want to comment on that?
Well, it was brought up at that meeting that we were at. There was a representative from North Kingstown there. And speaking with her subsequent to the meeting, I said, just have the manager call me. We haven't, haven't spoken yet. I think there's a number of issues that they need to resolve in North Kingstown before they decide on the type of program that they want to, want to go to. Because right now, they're operating with a volunteer.
But is that something we'd be amenable to, under the right financial circumstances?
I would, I'm not sure about Anne-Marie, but, no. Yes, it's something that we would look at.
Yeah, we've been looking at a lot of different possibilities. You never know what's going to ultimately pan out, but I know that if anybody approaches me, I bring it up to the town manager's office.
We've also had approach from a couple of other towns, but I think the other towns, some of the smaller communities, they're looking at it as far as the travel distance may not be advantageous to them. So, but, you know, the beauty of our facility is that we can separate the populations. We do have excellent care that's provided by the staff that we have, and people, people are interested in that, because, you know, this is a public safety department. It truly is. And if we can accommodate another community, we will. I think that we could fit at least one more community in with the existing resources that we have available.
Other questions?
I was just looking at the budget, trying to, where are the medical, any medical costs?
Under professional services.
Professional services, okay.
And I can honestly tell you that the veterinarians who work with me, they usually give us a heavily discounted rate, and because my staff and I are, I would classify as pretty well-trained in a lot of different avenues of animal care, that we do not always have to go to a veterinarian for assistance. So, some of the stuff is in-house. So, for instance, I mean, you know, when it comes to dogs with what appear to be hotspots all over their body, we don't have to automatically go to the veterinarian, rack up a vet bill. I can sit down, I can get the clippers on out, I can take the time to shave the dog down, we can give it a medicated bath, we can assess the situation and try to get the skin under control. And then usually, they're pretty, once you work with them and start getting him on the road, it's amazing to watch them actually heal.
But you do have people that come on-site, from what I understand from?
Yes, and I actually like that a lot more, because it decreases the stress level on the animal. I have found that, you know, people will always ask you, "Are you a no-kill shelter?" That is such, it's such a gray area. If, at this point in time, I would almost sort of say, "Yes, but we're not," because luckily, we have not had to euthanize for space limitations or time restraints at this time. We have euthanized for incurable diseases or behavior that would be detrimental, and, you know, there's nothing you can do about that. But I do know that there are some facilities out there who'll say they're no-kill, and that's because they take the animal off-premise and have it done at the vets. Now, when you have a veterinarian who can come on in and assist you with the matter, that eliminates taking that animal, putting it in a carrier, transporting it, bringing it into veterinarian offices with a different environment, different people, and just increasing the chances of the stress level, which increases the chances of any other types of secondary infections, whether it's an upper respiratory infection. So, we do have Dr. Chan, who's from South County Traveling Vet, and we also have Dr. Ryan Loyzelle, who is Salmon River Veterinary, and they both come to our facility. We also have the Spay Neuter Clinic that's in Warwick, that if we have a dog that needs to be neutered, or, you know, something with the dog that needs assistance, they will drive a van down and assist us by picking up that dog and transporting it back to Warwick. So, we've had a lot of that type of stuff. The times that we do transfer is when you have a surgical procedure where they need to put the animal on a respirator. So, if you have a dog that was hit by a car and, like, it has either severe laceration down the leg or a broken leg, then it needs to go into the vet. That's when they're transferred there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Unbelievable.
That brings us to the Communications Department. I've got Brian getting prepared for things tomorrow with wind, so I don't have him here tonight. The narrative on page N27, I think, speaks for itself. There's two functions that are here. One is maintenance and operation of the cable plant, and secondly is the enforcement of the Rhode Island Fire Safety Code. Those are the two functions within that office. Now, we have two full-time and one part-time employee that are employed there. You can see as far as the budget detail, that we've got about a seventy-six hundred dollar reduction in the part-time hours. That's because we had two part-time employees. One has been let go, and we are not replacing, but what that does is it's increasing the overtime hours that are necessary for the callbacks when an alarm goes off after hours. So, we're trading one side for the other, but I'm working with a smaller employment base. Overall, increase is about thirty-one hundred dollars in that department. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the radio services. Radio services is really somewhat of a misdemeanor. It provides for the capture of radio services that are used by multiple departments, and that's about two thousand dollars worth of cost. Fourteen hundred of that is tied up in us being able to maintain the backup radio system, VHF system. We had transferred over to an eight-hundred megahertz system, I think, two years ago now, but we've kept the VMS, VHS system active, so that if the eight-hundred were to go down, we've still got full communications with the public safety departments, whether it be EMS or the police. The remainder of that is the equipment acquisitions. We purchase the different radio replacements or batteries on a yearly basis. This year, we've got forty-seven hundred dollars worth of replacements. That includes two replacements on radios, one portable, one mobile, a couple of antennas, as well as replacement batteries for twenty-two units within the police department for their eight-hundred series radios. So, that's, that amount, as you can see, it fluctuates. Two years ago, we spent thirty-seven hundred dollars on equipment. Last year, we're spending, current year, we're spending less than twenty-two, and we'll be up at forty-seven. It all depends on what Public Works, EMS, or police, or public grounds or recreation needs as far as equipment replacements for radios. If there's no questions, we'll go to the Harbor Master. Do see that the Commodore is with us tonight. The budget is unchanged from, from last year. We're looking at a budget of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. What does that provide you with? Essentially, it provides a staff for forty hours a week for sixteen weeks during the summer, and then an additional sixteen weeks, sixteen hours for three weeks. So, we work with about a nineteen-week schedule that we have the Harbor Patrol boats, there's two of them that would be in the water. We provide payment at twelve dollars an hour for the assistance that, that work with Barry, for, and it works out to be about, just a little bit over four hundred hours a year. The Harbor Master is compensated, assuming that there would be twenty hours a week for sixteen weeks, and eight hours a week for twelve weeks, because he has an extended season. So, he's there on the, on the shoulder seasons as well. We also provide the Harbor Master with a two thousand dollar stipend, and that stipend is directly associated with the work for the mooring field in terms of the renewal of the moorings, placements and inspections of the moorings. Our Harbor Master program is principally an education program and safety program. We're not out there trying to find drug dealers. We're out there trying to make sure people have the proper preservers, that they have the proper safety equipment for the number of people that they have in the boats, and that they're going to have a safe time while they're, while they're on the pond or on Narrow River. We do work in conjunction with the town of Narragansett. Narragansett has a Harbor Patrol as well. For the most part, they provide services in the Narrow River area. We provide most of the services within the harbor itself on the Upper Salt Pond. Barry, anything you'd like to add for the council?
Questions here for Barry?
For those that don't know Barry, Barry Ennis is a, is a retired police officer who also provides most of the training in the state on Harbor Patrol programming. The program right now is certified with the, with the state's municipal training academy, and Barry does a lot of the teaching for it. What they learn, I have no idea.
Boating safety.
Just keep our water safe.
That's what we try to do.
So, you offer the boating safety course at the high school?
We have in the past, yes.
Yeah.
At the high school, at some of the local marinas. Not so much at URI. I'm sorry?
Did CCRI have one as well?
CCRI has it on a regular basis through, with the DEM. Myself and Mike Sherry are also certified with RIDEM to teach the boating safety class and facilitate our residents and whoever else wants to take the class with us for their boating safety cards, which are required by the state.
Carol?
Barry, I think it was last year, we lowered the speed limit in the pond, right, heading out towards the Galilee?
That was two years ago, yes.
Two years ago, and also, we, I think we passed something about swimming off the moorings, prohibiting that.
Yes, that was.
Does that work out?
That's fine. We haven't had any issues as far as the swimming, no complaints, no incidents, and...
How about the speed?
As everything we do with, with any changes for the ordinances, under Steve's direction here, we enter into a intensive education program as soon as we start. So, we made up flyers of all the no-wake zones, South Kingstown and Narragansett, together with what the requirements were, and, I mean, we just blasted them out, and everyone we encountered, we informed. And we did that for the first season. And actually, by Memorial Day of the first season, we had established a good database of, of people that were informed and throughout the summer, and we have very few problems with it.
And how's the speed limit, the reducing of the speed limit? That worked out okay?
That's what we, you did that for, yes.
Oh, you did that for that?
It was for the reduction of the speed.
I would imagine you probably see most of your issues in the channel, which, there's a no-wake zone there, so I would imagine that's where you probably see some...
It has been, but, I mean, we've, we, because of our staffing and because of our scheduling, I mean, we're out, we've historically been out there seven days a week, and, I mean, even sometimes when it's very slow, but that has given the general boating public out there the, the idea that we are there. And I will say that we do hand out written warnings, we hand out safety checks as part of our program, and we can issue citations if we wish, but our process is that rather than issuing a citation on a first violation, we like to give out warnings. And I can tell you that we can look at the database, and there's probably one or two repeat offenders out of a whole season.
That's great.
So, the education does work. Unfortunately, most of the people aren't aware, and our attitude is, it's a recreational program, and they're out there to enjoy themselves, or our point is just to make sure they're safe out there. And it comes back with a lot of positive feedback.
One other thing I would mention is that while we are an education and safety program, it also becomes a public safety function when we're dealing with hurricanes in terms of the boats that, that there's difficulties with. I mean, Barry is a detective. He found a lobster boat that was tied up to the town's dock that we had to have removed that had been, had all the equipment taken out of it. Barry located it.
Wow.
But at this point, we still haven't got our repayment.
I think it's still in the legal process at this time, Steve.
Did we have a boat sink over at the marina, across from the old police station? Marina Park?
That's the one we're talking about. It was a boat that was brought in and left as a derelict vessel. They pulled the radios out, and it sunk, and we had to pay to have the boat removed, and the police department is continuing to go after the owner for restitution.
That was during November, they tied it up to the town dock. We also have another one, if you are getting any reports, for a private dock, but we're waiting to, I'm trying to contact the owner of the dock at this time and see if we can get a complaint from him about the boat being there. DEM's already addressed the issue with them, and so, we're on top of that also.
There's a number of activities, and, you know, there are functions that have to be handled that are on the water at a public safety related, other than just general program itself. We do use those services as a police function as necessary.
And just for the, the public's knowledge, that boating safety class, if, is it nineteen-eighty-seven? What is the, what is the law state?
Anyone born after January first, nineteen-eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
That's operating a boat with more than ten horsepower, has to have a Rhode Island State boating card, and it's basically, basic driver ed for boats. It just lets everyone know what the rules of the road are and how to operate safely and what equipment they're supposed to have. It's an eight-hour class through the state.
Can you take it online?
You can take the class online, you can't get certified online.
I thought it was up in Providence.
Say again?
I thought it was up in Providence.
Again, CCRI, you can go, you can go take the test, I believe, at CCRI. The actual class itself is online, and it's a sampled class, and what they say is, if you pass that within eighty, then you will more than likely pass the test for the state with a seventy at least. So, they just want to, they want to give everyone the opportunity to, you know, study up and be able to go pass. You do not have to take the class, you can test out against it if you feel you have the personal experience.
Great. Other questions for Barry? Again, we thank you for keeping the water safe.
And thank you for your support. Steve, thank you.
Next item is the fire company donations. The town has traditionally provided a four hundred dollar donation for each of the nine fire companies within the community. We've maintained that budget item for many years. The, the next department is the Emergency Medical Services. Mike DeMello's with us tonight, who is our director. Before I go to the budget, I just want to tell you how proud I am of that department and the work that it's done, particularly the work that went on with both the hurricane and the work that went on after the blizzard. Mike personally, I think, spent more hours in the shelter than some of the client base. He also ensured that we had the EMS services that were necessary, and he coordinated with the town of Narragansett, because we ran that as a regional shelter. He also was directly involved at Warden's Pond with the power outage that was there, ensuring that the people were aware of what was necessary, what could be done, worked with us with, with public services, as well as dealing with some of the nursing homes and the power outages that were there. So, there was a great deal of effort that was done. Much of it was in coordination with the, with the shelter staff. The police department certainly coordinated those activities, but EMS was, was resident during the entire time, and it certainly demonstrated how good those services are in terms of providing the necessary safety net for particularly a very fragile population that needed the electric power to be able to make it through the nights, more so than just the heat that they...
That was necessary for...
Chief and the director has also... Chief and the director has also worked with Narragansett so that we could coordinate these efforts. So again, our objective is to try to provide efficient services, but also to try to provide regional services where we're not duplicating efforts. For us to have a shelter open four days and only have to have manpower for that shelter two days provides us with relief in terms of being able to meet other public safety demands there. So we're going to continue with that effort and I think also the staff that we had at that facility just did an excellent job, the volunteers that were there. Mike, why don't you come up and we'll talk about your budget at this point. The overall budget for EMS is showing an increase of about $46,700. A lion's share of that is again in the personnel line items. This budget will provide for the 16 EMTs that we operate with. We also operate with 10 Perdiem employees as well as Mike's services. You'll see that the amount of overtime is flat rated, but part-time services is up approximately $20,000. That fluctuates depending on whether we have a full complement of EMTs, which are paramedic grade, or whether or not we're running with the, with the, with a larger complement of Perdiem employees. The contract is in, like all of our labor contracts, at a 2% increase over what the current year compensation was with a graduated step plan. The statistics that are presented within the narrative itself indicate that we're continuing to see greater demand for services. We will see this continue as, as the population expands and more particularly as we deal with greater assisted living care facilities and senior housing opportunities that are being developed. At this point, we operate one full-time rig on a 24-hour-a-day basis. We operate a second team that operates from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night at the, that operates out of the old police station on the public services building. We're seeing that the, and I think it's pretty obvious that you're going to see more calls for service during the time that the second vehicle and shift isn't available from outside forces. We work extensively with Narragansett and with Charleston as far as the services are concerned, as far as outside agencies coming in to assist us. With that, I'd open it up for questions and let Mike make any comments that he'd like to as far as the program's concerned. Mike?
I'll take any questions if you have.
Questions here for Mike DeMello.
We're so satisfied.
See, can't be that easy. But one, one thing I did want to say, as Mr. Alfred mentioned, as far as the shelter situation, without the support of the volunteers and Southern Rhode Island volunteers specifically, you know, that just wouldn't have gone as smoothly as it has, not that, not that it was the, people think it's the greatest thing to go to a shelter until they get there. But it worked really well when you talked around the state and some of the other difficulties we experienced, similar difficulties to other shelters around the state, but everything worked pretty good. The first night of the snowstorm, we had, I think it was right around 90 people initially. And what we found is it was, it actu, unlike the hurricane where everybody comes at the beginning, this one here, it was a steady flow because as the power stayed out for days and the temperatures got lower, we started to see an increase or a fluctuation where people were in and out. So it was a little bit different, a little bit more difficult to manage, but we were able to, to do it pretty well.
We also have the services, the school department was quite helpful to us as well because Chartwell's provided the food services for the, for that program as well. I think I mentioned it before, what we do want to look at though is changing the venue and changing it from the high school to Broad Rock School. We're still waiting for the schools to get back to us as far as whether or not the generator of power is possible to take care of both the gym and the, and the area for the cafeteria. So once, we've got another planning meeting that's scheduled on that, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate that, but I do think that the regional approach is the, is the best approach for us to continue with.
Mike, do you see any epidemics with flu that there's, needs to be any kind of vaccination open to the public?
We had run a clinic in early December and that was kind of at the height of the flu season kicking in. It's tapered off a little bit now, but I suspect it's, it's pretty much an annual thing that we'll deal with. So going into next fall, we'll ramp up and through our meds pods program, we'll probably offer another vaccination clinic in conjunction with the Department of Health and try to get that vaccine out there to everybody.
Right. Other questions here at the table for Mike? Carol?
I guess, I just want some clarification. It says, and I think you just said, Steve, the majority of the mutual aid required from outside towns occurs during the hours of 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM when you don't have the second transporting ambulance in service, so what do you do?
Typically, we'll rely on mutual aid. The structure that we have with the supervisor that is in the sport utility vehicle sometimes can break off, depending on the severity of the first initial call, so they're able to at least get a first response and stabilize as we await a mutual aid rescue to come in, if possible.
So you're calling other towns?
Correct, correct.
I thought, are other towns calling us at that time also?
Yes, not as much as we call them during that time, but they, we spread the wealth around, so we, we share the services quite often.
Just to make sure that people understand the, the way we operate, we operate with the 24/7, with a full transport ambulance, with a paramedic crew. We also have a shift supervisor that's on 24/7 who goes in another vehicle, which would be a first responder vehicle. That first responder would work with the transport ambulance at the scene, but if there was another call, that truck, the first responder can break off to assess the situation and determine whether or not a call-in is necessary for other services. If the second, if the second vehicle is not available in South Kingstown, then the service call would go either to Narragansett or to Charleston.
And we basically judge that on geographics, you know, where we are in the, in the town, whoever's closest.
So you don't use private ambulance companies?
We can, you know, if that's an option as well. Typically, it's the same, same thing. It's just a matter of whether or not they're available. They have different staffing makeup, so sometimes their availability is, they may have one truck and it's not, you know, it's in Providence, so, you know, that, that does play a role. It's important to note too that the sport utility, known as Rescue Two with the supervisor, is pretty much capable of providing the same care as the transport ambulance. They have all the medications, all the equipment, they just don't have the stretcher to, to take the person to the hospital.
Mike, could you talk a little bit about, and I just thought that this was just a great thing for our town residents, the creation of the self-insurance fund so that if somebody doesn't, doesn't have, you know, they're uninsured, that, that kicks in? Or, I don't know, Steve or Alan wants to talk about that? I just think that that's...
I can start it off and I'm sure they can expand on it, but what that is, is what's commonly known as third-party billing, so the insurance company of the patient gets billed for the services that are provided. And then the self-insurance fund basically takes up the balance, so if they can't pay, if they're already a town resident, they're not going to, we're not going to chase them for that. So it makes up that, that difference there. I know we made some changes to our funding makeup last year and I think based on some of the receipts, I'm sure Alan has the most current numbers on that, it seems like that's starting to show fruition and improving our revenues on that end of it.
We'll be coming forward with additional adjustments in our recommendations.
And to put a number on that self-insured for the SK residents, it was around $131,000 last year. The year before it was $148,000. To give you an idea of the coverage that we waive because they are SK residents who don't have insurance, or the insurance doesn't cover the full amount.
Let's tell them what the billing value is though.
Well, as far, for the current year, we're projecting around $600,000 that we'll receive in revenues associated with the program.
Those come in as a revenue to your general fund, we're using $550,000 in revenue that comes in. Most of the money's coming in either through Blue Cross or United reimbursement or Medicare, Medicaid reimbursements that people would have that are obtaining services through, through this program. But if they don't have the coverages, then we're waiving what that, that cost would be to the South Kingstown residents. So it's not a case where they're going to get a bill, you owe us another $200 and it's going to come to the town. But the monies that we do collect for services rendered are then used to pay down what the cost of tax supports would be for this program.
Hey, could you just briefly speak about the plans to, for the old public works department with, you know, across from Marina Park? There's going to be some changes there and some additions and rebuilding?
Well, we hope. Right now, we're in the design stage and looking at that to get some cost estimation. The hopes initially is at least to improve the garage facility to eliminate the need to basically pay extra to make a truck that fits in the building. So, you know, we're trying to be smart about that and also to allow the, the spare vehicle to be kept inside stocked and ready should we need it due to mechanical failure or need it for a storm event where you have to actually man the third vehicle. So that's the intent of that and just to improve those services out of that building.
And I guess my last question is that Narcom, Narcam for, you know, that does that Jerusalem effect to bring people back, do, do we have to use that often?
Do we have to?
I mean, is there a need here?
Narcan is the medication that reverses the effects of people that may overdose on narcotic type medications, whether legally prescribed or illegally obtained, either way. I don't have the exact statistics, I can say that it's used probably more frequently than people would, would realize. And especially today, we see an increased prevalence of prescription medication issues as opposed to things like heroin or street-type drugs. And it's really becoming more of an epidemic with prescription leftover medicines that people are, are selling. So we use it, I mean, we have, it seems to come and go in rashes where you'll have several events that require that and then you won't have anything for a couple of months and then you'll get a rash of them.
Is there any dates coming up for, to turn, you know, prescription drugs over back to the community for, you know, disposal?
I'm not aware of, of any, I haven't planned any. I can probably work with the police chief on that to find out what, what methods. I know you can bring them to some of the pharmacies and there is a service, I believe, I'm not, the name escapes me, but there is a fee to turn them in. So generally, we tell people to check with their pharmacy, some of the stuff could be simply diluted in a glass of water, rendered safe, and you can just put it down the drain, but not everything. So check with your local pharmacy and they can give you some disposal instructions.
Thank you. Other questions here? Chief?
We have in conjunction with the Drug Enforcement Administration, a drop-off day at the police department and we do that regularly. We have one planned, I don't know the exact date, but it's later this month at the police department where people can come in, drop off medications that they no longer need or use or outdated. And then we turn it over to the Drug Enforcement Administration for proper disposal.
Best to get, get those out of the homes, you know, it's what they say. Other questions? Again, we can't thank you enough, Mike.
Okay, with that, we're going to move to page GF 25, we're back to the last two pages of the budget presentation.
Thank you, Chief, and Jackie, thank you.
Thank you.
Night, Jack.
We have a safe community thanks to all the valuable people working. Thank you.
All right, we're up to account 1410 municipal insurance. Many of the accounts that we've got left to review, I've already reviewed with you on the first night with the budget message. So if there's no questions on it, I'll run through them quickly. The municipal insurance, as I showed you the other night, it's a $231,000 cost for all of the property liability and casualty requirements for all of the different funds that we manage, including water, wastewater, sewer, neighborhood guild and PDB. Of that cost, the, the cost that's associated with the general fund is $231,000. The town benefits, employee benefits program, unemployment, we're looking at a $10,000 reduction and an estimated value of $25,000 for that program. This would be for people that leave the employer of the town that are eligible for collection of the unemployment, unemployment benefits. Life insurance, we purchase group life insurance through the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. The program, we went out to bid on, on that, the trust came in with a lower price. What we're looking at is the overall cost for all of the group life insurance that's provided on the municipal side is projected in the amount of $11,000 for the 13, 14 year. Social Security requirements, Social Security is a employer requirement of the 7.65%, including both Social Security and Medicare. Social Security, the 6.2% is on the first, $113,700 in earning. The Medicare, 1.5, 4.5% is unlimited, it's on any amount that, that a person would earn. As far as South Kingstown's cost is concerned, when we take all of the costs associated with salary, both full and part-time and overtime, all of those costs combined, when we look at the percentage rate, our cost would be $842,500, which is up $18,000 over the current year. The retirement contribution, as I mentioned the other night, we're in the MERS or Municipal Employees Retirement System, it's administered through the state retirement board. The program is independent of any of the other funds, this is, these are solely South Kingstown. South Kingstown has three separate retirement funds, one for police, one for EMS and one for municipal employees. The contribution rates are presented on page N45. We'll be seeing a small increase on the police from 14.79% and this is only on full-time salaries, not overtime, going up to 15.02. EMS will be a sizable increase, going from 2.74% up to 4.16. And the municipals will be at 11.41% going up to 11.75. Overall, it means that the general fund contribution for these services, for the retirement program contribution, will be $1,147,000 or $77,777 more than the current year. In addition, within that account, an additional $40,000 is set aside for deferred compensation funding. And in, in addition to that, we have one, one individual that's left that's outside of the retirement system, it's on a pay-as-you-go basis, it's the spouse of a retired police officer. And that dollar amount, I believe, is in the amount of...
Seven thousand?
Seven, $7,480. I think we talked extensively on Monday night on the health care insurance. Health care, we're looking at $3,044,545. Also, based on Monday's discussions, I provided you last night with copies of the post-employment retirement benefit associated with health care for all of the different earning classes of town employees. If there's no questions, I'll move on. I will note again that the contribution rates that have been calculated in the budget will be at 20% for EMS employees, for the 2013, 14 and 17 and a half percent has been called for all of the other labor groups. If there's no questions, we'll move forward to the workers' comp. Workers' comp... Workers' comp, we're expecting a slight increase of about $2,300. Overall cost will be about $127,000 for that program cost for the, for workers' comp. The transfer of the school fund will be dealt with, with the school committee on the 14th, 13th of March, I believe it's next Thursday night, Wednesday night. On page N49, and we need to look at the debt service, debt service on the education debt service, we're looking at a cost of 2.115 million that's required for the education debt service. When we take out the third-party revenues that are paying down that cost of the debt, the overall tax effort that'll be necessary will be $1,280,000. The debt service for the municipality, for municipal issues, at $1,104,000. Net cost, tax effort-wise, would be $728,000. And the detail is presented on page N49 and N50. N51 shows us the capital improvement program at the $1,232,000, which was the amount approved by the council at the end of January. We have recommended no revisions in that, in that program at this time. The final item within the budget document will be the fund contingency. We've maintained that at a $65,000 funding level. As I mentioned to you, th, this account would be used for emergency purposes if there was overspending in any of the accounts that we've already talked about. This would give us some flexibility to be able to make sure that we stayed within the bottom line of the total budget. The overall budget that we have worked through over the last three nights amounts to $74,210,340, $873,000 more than the current year allocation. The remainder, what the council will need to, to, to deal with is, one, the meeting next Wednesday with the school department, and two, the council will have to decide when they want to deliberate as far as adjustments, revisions or additions that you may wish to make to the manager's budget. The council needs to have completed those deliberations so that a budget adoption, preliminary budget adoption can be held on, we've got it scheduled for 5:00 on March 18th. So, we need to have those decisions made in advance of that. If the council wishes to schedule the preliminary adoption for 6:00 and meet at 5:00 to do the deliberations that night, we can set it up any way you want. But you need to make some decisions on what you need to discuss or whether there's adjustments that are warranted on what's been presented so far. So, with that, that ends my presentation of the, the general fund and utilities.
Mike, did you have a question?
No.
Any questions here at the table?
I just say, it's amazing that you and us together, I have a question for Mayor Scott and Peter, and that, those are difficult, this must be Herculean task, is all I have to say.
Good job.
Again...
So, I will go through, again, thank you Stephen Allen and Dale, I was remiss, but I did thank you and Susan last night. It was just a pleasure to hear about the human service, the private agencies that do and do and do and do more for our needed population here in the community. So, I know that Terry Murphy works with some of that. And it was a pleasure to hear through the chief and Jackie and Ann Marie and Communications Brian, even though he wasn't able to be here, and Mike DeMello and Barry, and it's the safety of our community with everyone working together. So, at this time, we will get together on Monday night. It's been a pleasure the last three nights. I'm glad that we have the next few nights to ourselves and we'll get together again on Monday and then with the school committee to continue the budget. But again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.